There, whether they've called about the blight, um we've looked into it every time, uh there is um nothing that can be done as far as. The blight and maybe the condition of the home, um you know, Department of Health and Human Services takes the stances if they are being fed. They're being cared for, they have shelter, um there's not much they can do, it's it's their right to live in. Or conditions or squalor, what we might consider squalor, so um we've exhausted just about everything that we can do other than. Um my office teaches those stories, receives calls and we still go out and talk to the family and and try to compel them to to clean up. I don't know which more, what more can be done, but um I am open to suggestions and I'm willing to listen and again, if I get a call and I want a call, we're still gonna go out there. One of the things that the owner did mention to me was he, uh you know, I I offered it to him that we would uh as a community effort, come out and help him and uh. You know, he said that he was not, he didn't want anybody coming and cleaning up his yard that made a complaint against him. And I said, well, there's plenty of people that haven't made a complaint um that are probably wanting to come and help out and uh he he uh did not want to accept that. Um that's where it's at as far as as my involvement is concerned, I don't know which more I can do, but again, I'm willing to answer questions.
A follow up to uh what you said about his response to the. What do you think the, from what you've gathered, uh is a reason why he's he's um declining to accept help? Is it a uh an angry, evil, a pride thing, or you know, so is.
I think it's, I think it's a little bit of mo- of both, but I guess more of the anger, he he felt like he was being attacked by all the calls that are coming in and all the contact that he's having from my office, you know. Um he he did mention that, you know, with the tree, the tree was an issue and he he did say that, you know, if somebody wanted to help with that, he would probably accept the help with that, but as far as anything else is concerned. He did not want any help.
First of all, yeah.
It's unvantageous subdivision, um if you if you come in and you immediately head south uh just before the bend there, I don't know the exact address, but it's. You can't. Is this Skyview?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did, uh years ago when I was on the environmental committee, we did try to look into a, a. Blight ordinance of people and it is so hard to define what, that's the biggest issue and we ended up doing um. We ended up doing, like you're only allowed, it's been a long time ago, so I think you're only allowed one vehicle that's unlicensed in your yard, anything else. Um I think uh there's a a a law against that, but it has to be complaint driven. So it's very hard for people to complain when you live right next door because they can make life miserable on you also, so that's why. Uh we made it complaint driven, um and you know, back then they talked about, well, if you have anything more than three quart of firewood, it has to be. Put inside and things like that, that's just, a lot of that's not gonna fly, it's gonna be extremely hard to to put that together. I have the same issue right straight across the road from me and on school road, it is pathetic. You know, and we worry about a lot of other stuff, but there are some huge issues. And uh Resort Township is probably one of the cleanest townships around and I just wish that we could come up with something, but. They do pay the taxes on their property, so it's hard to touch, but we did try it once.
I I did also, uh the the vehicles, you know, I did, I did talk about that, all of them are properly registered, um I ran the plates, they're in our working order.
Even the one with the tire that keeps going flat?
Yep, yep. Yep, so that was what I, so when I, just to kind of give you a little context, so when I first went there, again, I wasn't. Well received, they didn't, they didn't want me there, um it actually took them about twenty minutes to answer the door, they saw me pull up, they ran into the house. Um they wouldn't answer the door, so I finally did have the conversation, but on my way out, I took note of all the plates, I ran them because I wanted to know who owned the property, she wouldn't give me her name. Uh or anything like that, which is right, she didn't have to, but um so I checked those plates, they are. Now whether they're in working order or not, I don't know, but um he did say to me that they are our vehicles that are registered to him, they're uh they are operable, so again, there's there's not much that I can I can do from that standpoint, so. Thank you for all your.
Quick question for you, so I'm, I'm on the planning commission as well and we we talked about quite pretty extensively last fall into this winter. And the issue that ours came up, which it sounds like you verify that is just, you know, the the county doesn't really have, I think the state doesn't, so. If we were to come up with some type of blight ordinance, I I don't, I'm not sure, we we always got hung up on what are our avenues for enforcement.
Fines, um and again, we talked, I talked about that last time I was here, uh you you can find them to kingdom come, if they don't have the money, they're not gonna pay. And then, and then what, right, you said, where where do you go from there, um? You would have to seek civil counsel, I think here at the at the township level and 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 seek remedy with through them, but out outside of of finding them. And that's why I tried to approach it as a as a concerned community member, you know, we wanna help out, what can we do, um and again, it's just.
Rubbish. Thanks.
Thank you, hey, I took over two minutes, I apologize.
Well, a point of suggestion, uh it wouldn't hurt, although it's nice that it spends time before, it wouldn't hurt to inform the committee, maybe it's not of of yourselves, of. Of members of major, look at that one more term, it is hard to write a statute like that because. Uh a lot of the terms are subjective, what's ugly, what's offensive, everything is is subjective. People live in homeowners associations, they have lots of rules like that, a lot of people hate the homeowners association. And you want to avoid a, a car and a complainer, that a homeowners' allis complaint thing and still hit the real nuisance things. So I suggest maybe, maybe just try to get the real nuisance items that are are clear and not try to make an overall blanket. Rule and start with that, uh and then seek work also on what's building, but certainly fines and possibly injunction really been possibly. An order that if if they don't clean it in a certain amount of time, township will clean it and and deliver back to them is another option. The other uh point I make is, we do have the community mediation service group here in town, um and I don't know if they've ever addressed this type of problem or what type of fees they. They uh charge, but they're trained mediators trying to try to get people come to some common ground. And uh it's a a more neutral uh setting and you know, something that might be concerned when when neighbors get. And with each other.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks for the township cleanup, I thought they did a great job. They they held stuff I couldn't believe they did, it's great.
Did everybody get picked up?
No.
No, there's still piles out there.
Really?
Right, but there's things that maybe they wouldn't take, I saw some of that.
Oh colleges, there's still stuff, they didn't get out on the other side of the lake.
I've not had one call, but somebody was missed. I don't know, it's they've been. Yeah, they they were there early and.
We enjoyed the Saturday night dinner too.
How about the June first?
I, we enjoyed it being later. And being able to put stuff out all week, then they come and pick it up and you can put more on, I think it's time of the year, why can't people pick their stuff up?
Oh, yeah. The one, the one day event, I think people might have had to get a little used to. It used to be like you could put stuff out all week till they they came. Okay, so if there's no more public comment. I will close and we'll move on to approval of the agenda. So. I sort of need to add two things or we need to have a special meeting. I need to add Morford Road dot. Very simple, and I need to add the city's tasking rectification, that's. Simple thing. I'd add those number six and number seven for new business.
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Support.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I saw the library leaves, don't you?
Yep, she says right there.
Oh, there you are. So. Let's see, correspondence, anybody having correspondence? Likewise, um minutes of previous meetings.
I had some, I suppose a minor clarification or any of us.
And I would like to add a. Sentence at the end of Tim's motion there. That would say that the motion to approve the planning commission's findings of denying the rezoning failing by a three to two vote, the ordinance two of twenty twenty five was approved for the permission of rezoning from R. One A to R two B. Just to make some clarification there.
Okay, um I'd like to talk about the land division payment thing. Where you have written in here, they couldn't believe that we can want a hundred and fifty per parcel for being split considering that they give you the new parcel and legal description and you verify the name and such. So that came from. The equalization department and I said to her, I'm surprised that you've. You said something like that and she said, no, I never did, this, this is what what she wrote to me. She asked what the county's part of land division was, cause I think she was trying to understand the process. I explained to her, once we get the approval from you, that we assign the parcel number and create the new parcel legal and send it to you. That you would most likely use the split combo tool. And cut and paste the legal, but some assessors like to type it in as every assessor does this different. I also said that I didn't know how much work you did before we get the approval from you. I said that all assessor contracts are written different, some charged by the parcel, some charged for each item of work done and some just charge a blank fee for everything. I know nothing about your contract or do I need to, it is not my business, it's also not my place to say or suggest. Anything regarding what anyone is paid, it's up to the township board. So I'd like that. Sentence taken out. And which sentence was that again? It's the second one and number six.
But you do cut and paste, I mean, that is an option.
Yeah. You know, I pretty much do exactly what she said. Does anybody have anything else?
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Support.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay. Minutes are approved, so now at this point, um may we bring. The library presentation. After the front.
Well, thank you for giving me time today, I'm here, um Val Meyerson here from the public library to just give you a little bit of an update on what's going on at the library. Um how our year went and a few things, um just to bring you up to date on um. Current and hopefully future stuff, I've I'm presenting my annual report and I've left copies of that on the desk out front if anybody here wants that. Um so, again, thanks for giving me a little bit of time, I see you have a really busy agenda, so I'll try and um be brief. As I can, um we again had a great year, um business at the library is, I'm kind of doing what we anticipate, it's. Uh slowly, all of our statistics are kind of going up, our um library cardholders are increasing, our circulation is increasing. And um business at the library is really um looking good, so um a couple of things I wanted to report on the annual report. Um you can see that at the back of that report gives all of our numbers, our door counts are up six percent. And um our circulation was up two percent, the the trend these days really, um it's interesting to see is the digital circulation is really booming. Right now, our digital circulation represents about thirty percent of our total circulation and that's going up by about twenty percent. Our in-house circulation is going down slightly and so we're really looking at how we spend our money and where we're putting resources to hopefully match the needs of our community. Meeting room bookings were um up quite a bit this year and we were excited because um a lot of the the. Crunch areas for meeting room space is people wanting small meeting rooms or uh hosting a Zoom meeting or taking a call. Or doing some quiet study and we were able to partner with the community foundation on a grant to fund a meeting booth. This is a one or two person meeting room space that's um quiet, closed, it's got power, um internet and lighting in it, so that's been a really nice addition for us. Um programmings, we are doing a lot of programs, um our newsletter just came out, hopefully you all received that in your mailbox in the last week. If not, I did put some out on the desk out there as well, we just had our summer reading kickoff last Friday. And we had over three hundred people come in for cast of characters and to start their um summer reading fun, so that's always. Um a joy to be there and luckily the weather held out for us and um brought an ice cream truck in which really I think boosted everybody's um fun meter there. Um again, technology is a big thing that we do at the library, we are um there to answer questions for people and really help people with things um. Like filling out DHHS applications, a lot of job applications now are online and we help a lot of patrons walk through that process on our computers. As well as um people come in for wifi all the time. And another thing that's that's up, which I think um is. It this whole idea of finding help, people are really looking to the library to come in and get their questions answered. Our reference questions were up twenty percent last year and these are just people coming and not necessarily um. You know, asking where the bathroom is or where a book is, but more questions that need in-depth answers and those are really up and those include our technology questions. Um people doing research, looking for photographs or historical information, those are those types of questions that we're able to help them with at the desk. And those people are really finding us and I'm getting some good information. Um the other thing that you received that I report on every year is just that chart um that is kind of the. Comparison of where your money is going and how that compares to the usage. And that's just a spreadsheet where you can kind of see how you compare to the other townships in the city. And Resort Township, you guys are, and this is pretty standard, you're always really flat, you represent about thirteen percent of our revenues, our operating revenues. And your population is about fourteen percent of our population and you represent thirteen percent of our cardholders and about fifteen percent of our circulation, so. You're putting in and getting out pretty much on um equitable terms there, so that's uh really nice to see. Your book drop is really popular and it's getting more popular, I think again, patrons are finding these services, we've had them for a while. But um our, your use of our book return here at Township Hall was up eleven percent last year. So I think people are just finding the services and finding the convenience really handy. Um a couple of projects, we just, I don't know if you've been in town the last few weeks, we just finished a new roofing project, that was a big deal, we've been um had a leaky roof for a long time and it was really nice to finally get that. Um done and have a dry building, um we're really happy about that and um. And then the other thing that we've done is our strategic plan, last year we really worked hard um on our strategic plan. And the board this spring um approved our plan, which I gave you in your packet and I'll just highlight a few things in that, really, we wanted to um have um. Work on a system of really helping us move forward in a direction that would meet the needs of the community. And so we really wanted to get community feedback, we did a survey last spring, had over nine hundred and seventy responses to our survey about. The job we're doing and what other things they'd like to see us um provide and the uh that. Information was really um handy in moving forward, what we did find out though, that that was. Um most of the people that responded to that were library cardholders and we felt it was important to hear from people that don't necessarily. Use the library on a regular basis, so my committee, I had a committee working on this that was made up of staff, board members, friends of the library members and community members. And they decided to go spend a day at one of the football games last fall, finding people that didn't have library cards and getting input from them to help us. Uh build this plan into the future, so I thought that that worked out really well and after that, we um pulled together some some um study groups and. Or focus groups to dig down into getting a little bit more specific detail on where we wanted to go. And so we took all of that information from all these um different sources and put together a plan. Um we were able to update our vision and mission statement, so we're, um our vision is growing a vibrant, connected community, pretty simple. Um and we, our mission is providing an exceptional place to nurture knowledge and inspire curiosity. This whole idea of connectedness came across really strong in a lot of the um information that we got back. And um our, one of our focus groups, our twenty to forty year old focus group, one of the key things that came out of that is this group of people. Um really wanted a place to connect, a lot of them work from home, they um you know, a lot of things to do in the evening for that group involve alcohol or going to a bar or spending a lot of money. And um the the folks really wanted an inexpensive way to connect with people their own age and so we created a new program called Third Place. Which we actually have volunteers in that age category, a cu- a young couple hosts that for us, um it's been going really well, it's been fun to see kind of. Instant gratification from our planning and our hard work and um providing this space for young people to gather, they play games, watch movies and just, you know, eat snacks and that kind of thing and it's um worked really well. Um the the board, once we've, we've gathered all that information, we, they came up with four strategic priorities, the first one is is our building. That's um number one priority, everybody talked about how much they love the library building and um it's getting, it's not old, but it's over twenty years old at this point and it's gonna be needing some work in the next. Um you know, in the next five to ten years and how are we gonna fund that, so we're really looking at um combining our capital improvement plan, looking at um. Our funds and future funds of um a bit of availability and where where we want to go to make sure our building lasts way into the future. Um and as you know, the townships don't fund. as well as, um, people come in for wifi all the time. Um, and another thing that's, that's up, which I think, um, is it, this whole idea of finding help, people are really looking to the library to come in and get their questions answered. Our reference questions were up twenty percent last year and these are just people coming in, not necessarily, um, you know, asking where the bathroom is or where a book is, but more questions that need in-depth answers and those are really up. And those include our technology questions, um, people doing research, looking for photographs or historical information. Those are those types of questions that we're able to help them with at the desk and those people are really finding us and, um, getting some good information. Um, the other thing that you received that I report on every year is just that chart, um, that is kind of the comparison of where your money is going and how that compares to the usage. And that's just a spreadsheet where you can kind of see how you compare to the other townships in the city. And resort township, you guys are, and this is pretty standard, you're always really flat. You represent about thirteen percent of our revenues, our operating revenues and your population is about fourteen percent of our population. And you represent thirteen percent of our cardholders and about fifteen percent of our circulation. So you're putting in and getting out pretty much on, um, equitable terms there. So that's, uh, really nice to see. Your book drop is really popular and it's getting more popular. I think again, patrons are finding these services. We've had them for a while. But, um, our, your use of our book return here at Township Hall was up eleven percent last year. So I think people are just finding the services and finding the convenience really handy. Um, a couple of projects, we just, I don't know if you've been in town the last few weeks. We just finished a new roofing project. That was a big deal. We've been, um, had a leaky roof for a long time and it was really nice to finally get that um, done and have a dry building. Um, we're really happy about that. And, um, and then the other thing that we've done is our strategic plan. Last year, we really worked hard um, on our strategic plan and the board this spring, um, approved our plan, which I gave you in your packet. And I'll just highlight a few things in that. Really, we wanted to, um, have, um, work on a system of really helping us move forward in a direction that would meet the needs of the community. And so we really wanted to get community feedback. We did a survey last spring, had over nine hundred and seventy responses to our survey about the job we're doing and what other things they'd like to see us, um, provide. And the, uh, that information was really, um, handy in moving forward. What we did find out though, that that was, um, most of the people that responded to that were library cardholders and we felt it was important to hear from people that don't necessarily use the library on a regular basis. So my committee, I had a committee working on this that was made up of staff, board members, friends of the library members and community members. And they decided to go spend a day at one of the football games last fall, finding people that didn't have library cards and getting input from them to help us, uh, build this plan into the future. So I thought that, that worked out really well. And after that, we, um, pulled together some, some, um, study groups and or focus groups to dig down into getting a little bit more specific detail on where we wanted to go. And so we took all of that information from all these, um, different sources and put together a plan. Um, we were able to update our vision and mission statement. So we're, um, our vision is growing a vibrant, connected community, pretty simple. Um, and we, our mission is providing an exceptional place to nurture knowledge and inspire curiosity. This whole idea of connectedness came across really strong in a lot of the, um, information that we got back. And, um, our, one of our focus groups, our twenty to forty year old focus group, one of the key things that came out of that is this group of people um, really wanted a place to connect. A lot of them work from home. They, um, you know, a lot of things to do in the evening for that group involve alcohol or going to a bar or spending a lot of money. And, um, the, the folks really wanted an inexpensive way to connect with people their own age. And so we created a new program called Third Place, which we actually have volunteers in that age category, a cu- a young couple hosts that for us. Um, it's been going really well. It's been fun to see kind of instant gratification from our planning and our hard work and, um, providing this space for young people to gather. They play games, watch movies and just, you know, eat snacks and that kind of thing. And it's, um, worked really well. Um, the, the board, once we've, we gathered all that information, we, they came up with four strategic priorities. The first one is, is our building. That's, um, number one priority. Everybody talked about how much they love the library building. And, um, it's getting, it's not old, but it's over twenty years old at this point and it's going to be needing some work in the next, um, you know, in the next five to ten years. And how are we going to fund that? So we're really looking at, um, combining our capital improvement plan, looking at, um, our funds and future funds of, um, a bit of the availability and where, where we want to go to make sure our building lasts way into the future. Um, and as you know, the townships don't fund any of the building. Um, you just get the benefit of having a really lovely building without, um, funding any of it. Your tax dollars are strictly for operations. So we're looking at other ways and other means to fund that, that property. Um, and the number two priority, which we talked a little bit about was this expanding connections. Um, the third priority was the staff. That's, the staff at the library is of course the number one asset that we have. Um, they're the ones providing the service to the people and providing the different, um, programs that we offer. So the board felt it was important to really take care of them. And then the last priority, of course, was, um, cultivating curiosity. And this is just all around our collections and programming. And so, um, right now we're working really hard at implementing this plan. My, my, um, management team, we, we meet monthly and review the different projects that they have and, um, getting, um, the plan in place and moving forward. Um, and with that, I would love to open it up to questions. It's, we're looking forward to great summer and, um, thank you for giving me some time.
Thanks, Al.
Uh-huh. Any questions?
Any questions out there?
Yeah. I'm Pam Penan in Nide. How would you feel about a township member being part of the library boards?
Um, I would love it, but it's against the law. Because we're a district library of the city of Petoskey and so the city, um, appoints all of my board members. If the township joined the district, then they would get, um, member, membership off the wall. Yeah, yeah. And it was just set up that way, um, the hit, we don't want to go into the history.
Since it's a district library, supported by the city of Petoskey, a township member could not be part of the board.
Correct. The, the district board is made up of people from the district. And the, the governing body that appoints our board members is the city of Petoskey. And so they have to be residents of the city. Yes. But I would love it. I, and I, you know, really you guys, to be honest, get a really good deal because we love input. We take input from um, the township residents, you know, we, you get full service. Um, and I, you know, I would love it if you were a member of our, our district library, um.
I talked about jobs.
Yeah.
Cause I didn't understand.
Yeah, that, that's why.
And some. Yeah.
Why do you create an ex-official position for a township? Just.
Yeah. So we actually do. We have a spot on our agenda specifically for township representatives and we do have, uh, one of our township sends a representative every month, provides input to our board every month. Um, there's been kind of on and off. You guys have done that in the past too. We used to have somebody that, um, provided township input at our board meetings and we'd be happy. Again, it's on our agenda and, um, we have four townships that we contract with and we just need a representative to be there.
Only one send the regular.
Only one of the four sends a regular. You guys used to. Yeah, and, um, it's Bear Creek sends somebody every month and then you used to, and then the other two do not. The other two are Springvale and Little Travers.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for giving me time. I appreciate it.
You did a job with the libraries.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Moving into unfinished business. Number one is building construction discussion. Um, the attorney is not ready to talk to us. We've got to get him ready next month. It's gotta, gotta happen next month. So then number two is the compost site opening. Probably whatever you got to clear for. Um. So. I, I see what for.
So the recommendations for the, from the environmental committee were to open no later than July fourth, install a gate to be opened and closed each day and a camera. The hours for the twenty twenty-five season will be Friday, Saturday and Sunday from eight to five. Yard waste only for this year. Rules to be posted on website, Facebook page and at the site. Um, hire Jake Wayne Sons to transport their, to the recycling center uh, at seventy dollars a load. And then hire Mr. Ferguson either through Five H or Jake Wayne Sons to load the yard waste into the dumping trailer. Um, Emma County can have them bill us for the loads taken by Jake Wayne. We have to still figure that out with them and.
I don't think they charge for it.
No, they do. They charge, they do. Two, two dollars a yard.
Is it?
Yes.
Do they charge us for those dumpsters that we put down there?
Yes. Eighty dollars every time one comes.
But is that for the two and is that for the delivery?
Delivery and pay, no, delivery.
It's eighty dollars when they bring in, eighty dollars when they take it and that's trucking.
And then you pay, cause it's a forty thing, forty yard thing. So you pay two dollars a yard for.
Okay, I, I didn't think they charged for that. That's it. It used to be that. Okay.
And then the gate will be open and closed by volunteers from the environmental committee and township residents and we'll make a schedule up so that that happens.
So. Tell me why we wouldn't open it tomorrow.
Um, we don't have the gate installed and we don't have the camera installed and we don't have. You were at the meeting.
I, I was, but I didn't think it was appropriate to ask the question there.
Okay. Oh.
What are these?
I'm gonna get it next week.
You know, I, I, I don't see how the gate helps us. You know, it's always been open seven days a week. There's never really been a gate there during the summer.
Well, we're deterring people from dropping all their brush. We've talked about this.
And.
And before, because it will fill up in a day if we open it to the, anybody.
And I don't think it will.
Well, we're just being cautious.
When you look at the brush that you see on the road now, I didn't see any this weekend.
But this is the recommendations from the environmental committee. We've talked about this for the last two or three meetings. And you know, if we open it Friday, Saturday and Sunday and if it's not super busy and there's like, then we can, you know, adjust the times. But I think.
Cause we gotta start with baby steps and then. If, if you, if you would hire Five H, you'd have somebody that's gonna process the brush weekly or twice weekly.
We were informed that Five H really didn't want to do chopping this year.
Who informed you that?
Person that works for Five H.
Oh.
So.
Why would they give us a bid then?
But I mean, you, you sat there and you heard us talk that people are going to bring in so much brush and we would have to dispose it probably in one day. So let's start small and see how it works two, three weeks or a month. And if it's fine and it's not being misused, then we can open it for more days.
Alright.
But that's still not open for brush, right?
No.
No.
Okay. What's, what's considered brush? I mean, if you have an inch big. Inch bigger, okay. As long as it's defined, so then people know the difference between.
Yeah, that's. I, I would consider it all the stuff that you saw in people's trucks and trailers going down the road that's ten feet long.
So some of the rules involved would be you must be a township resident to use a compost site. Remove all compost from the containers and bags. Commercial use is strictly prohibited. Yard waste and small debris is allowed. Grass clippings, leaves, weeds, pine cones, shrubbery clippings. So that's what's going to be allowed this year.
I would think that just having it open on the weekends will help eliminate a commercial thing too. Most of those guys probably aren't working close to them, be working in dump cans.
We've never really had a commercial problem.
We have on and off.
We've had a couple in there, yeah.
Right.
And light at night.
Yeah, but they're very little, but very little abuse for. When we had cameras up there before.
For being eight years.
Yeah.
I.
Most of these actions that are being proposed are in anticipation of concern rather than issues that have happened in the past.
Right, but we didn't have an ice storm before. So that's, I, we just want to be cautious and not get over bombarded with brush. And respecting neighbors that live up next to the site and just be more aware of of everything going on there.
In anticipation of being more debris from the storm. Rather than complaints of being an issue of the past and.
A mixture of both, yes.
Um, I was at your environmental committee last week and where are you with progress with getting the gate installed? Have you contacted someone so that it will be in place by beginning in July?
It will be whether my husband and I do it and friend, people to do it.
Somebody, somebody will, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will take volunteers. Yes.
Um, and how is this going to be, notification going out to this very, online or the?
Hopefully.
Township. On the township website, we have a Facebook page. We'll send out an email blast.
Right, okay.
And then we'll also have it, um.
We'll post it on the board on it down there too.
The sign down there, yes.
Oh, good.
I guess the question then, clarification for homeowners of folks that subcontract or get a contractor to clear their waste for them. They cannot use that thing. Correct. If you use a contractor to take your waste away, you might longer can use that.
Right.
I mean, if you have. But anyway, the hire's a contractor, isn't going to have just a little tiny bit. They're going to have a be. And they're already charging you for it anyways then.
That, when we way back when I was on the committee, we kept track of cameras and we did have a couple of them. Polly's picking, blocking, came in and dumped two five gallon buckets of flowers in. And Mrs. Wiley bought blue gaskets because they were commercial. Um, we did have another contractor come in that she was mad about, but we looked at the camera, they pulled in threw, uh, uh, one bag of grass clippings out. They had brush in there and they left. So just because they pull in doesn't necessarily mean they're dumping a whole trailer.
Well, and with the new camera, we can notice that.
We can keep an eye on.
Right.
Um, you know, and, and I see in here it says, uh, uh, if at any time the site is abused, we can close it for the season. Now, if we only have one or two people abusing it, don't close it for everybody.
Well, that's not what we're talking about. But I mean, if you have a ton of brush brought in there and it's full.
Well, yeah, I get that. That's what, that's a.
That's what we're talking about.
Um, you know, just remember that, that, the, the, the tax parcels in resort township and the money that we spent last year to take care of that was less than eleven dollars a tax parcel to take care of that down there. That's nothing. You know what I'm saying, people? That's nothing for every, for something for everybody to use.
Do you have a breakdown of where you came up with that number?
Yeah. So, um, if you look at it that way, people use for, for eleven dollars is is huge for people to be able to use it. Um, I know we're upset about the brush and everything else, but I can tell you that the county and city sure as hell didn't want this either. But they're locked with a huge debt too, you guys. Um, they're having to pay for stuff that, I mean, they haven't even cleaned up the road yet. And they're locked with a huge bill. We understand. We just took a millage out or to, to, uh, help take care of recycling and, and all of this other stuff. I understand that it's a huge slippery slope, but maybe you could open it just on Saturdays and Sundays for brush for people. So something, because it's, it's, it's nothing, you guys, for eleven dollars to take care of the brush like last year. I mean, it's, you pay more for a library than you do for something that everybody uses too. Um, you know, there's a lot of, there's.
But there's not saying that we can't extend it, you know, see how we're doing first for this year. And then, I mean, if it's, we can get going on it good then. And it's not overviews, then you know, maybe we can open it up to the other stuff.
Are you going to have attendance there in the weekend days?
No, attendance?
Yeah.
No, we have a camera.
Um, I see also it says that you have to take it out of, if take your stuff out of bags and containers. Those, those big bags you buy at home before like really. Uh.
They're recycled. That, they're for.
But they're living in plastic bags down there too and they, we don't want all that down. No, I, I mean, I've never seen a lot of plastic, but these, um, paper bags are really popular.
Yeah. So we can make and change that and say if it's a leaf bag, every.
Yeah.
Biodegradable, then it can stay there.
And some plastic is biodegradable, but I never really saw much of that. It was, it was all paper stuff. Um, are you there Tammy?
I am. So Mark, um, you, in the beginning, we were very upset and if you would like to, I can point out why. We were upset because a low lying area got filled in with zero engineering plans by the environmental committee and by the township supervisor. They trucked in hundreds, if not a thousand dump truck loads of filled dirt and brought the elevation up, I believe, three or four feet, making us the low lying property, which is against Michigan law. You cannot change the historical low lying areas to push water onto your neighbor. So yes, our attorney had us start at the very beginning of, we were against everything so that we could meet in the middle. But we have now met in the middle and we got the screening that wasn't going to go there. We got hours that have not been enforced, but the board is now trying to enforce the hours that were agreed with us in two thousand and sixteen. We were promised cameras, not for a year or two. We were promised cameras to stay there. We witnessed and the, and everybody likes to say, oh, we, we didn't see anybody overnight. That isn't what we were complaining about. We were complaining about if it closed at five P M, people coming in until dark. The, the homes to the south all came to a meeting with the township supervisor and we ca- we came to an agreement on hours. So the gate is going to enforce those hours so that we can have peaceful enjoyment of our homes. And we all use the site. We don't want to see it go anywhere. We're not against it. We want to see it used responsibly. So I personally have made sure I've come to the last few board meetings because I want to be part of the plan and the solution. Eric and I have volunteered that we will happily open and close the gates. Um, if they do it Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we will take care of opening it Friday morning, shutting it Friday night. That's before I go to work and on my way home. We will shut it Saturday night. Eric will open it Sunday morning on his way to work. I will shut it Sunday night. That just means we need a volunteer for Saturday. We are trying to work with the township. And the slow roll approach is a great approach because if nobody abuses it and dumps brush, then hey, it can be opened seven days a week and we can come up with a schedule of just opening and shutting the gate each morning. It's not a big deal to just en- enforce the hours. So I think the environmental committee did a great job on, on listening and making a good plan so we don't have a huge bill from brush. It's never been about the yard waste, the, the little stuff. It's been about the brush because if that piece of property was to overfill with brush, it could fill in the retention ponds. If they need to bring loaders in, like these, these seven sites around the county have had to do, that digs up the ground. That then means that an engineer has to come back in, make sure that the, um, retention ponds are sound, that the firms are sound and built to spec. Then if it's not, then it has to be re-escavated. Then the engineer has to come back in. It opens up a whole nother can of.
More than your three minutes.
No, you're good.
Back when we did that, um, ten years ago.
Um, the, the compost site wasn't even there when it rains the first time.
Right.
When it rained, that, when it's your rain.
You have, you know, uh, when we, we spent probably, and I'm just going to go back because a lot of this needs to be brought out, that we did research way, way long time. Uh, when we did that, we looked at multi, multiple places to put that site, okay? We came to the conclusion where it was the safest. Um, you know, where, where it was going to be used the most, which is down towards, uh, the end of Resort Pike where people are going to use it the most. Um, where it could be, uh, safe for, um, you know, the little old ladies to be able to walk in and, and put the stuff. Uh, and still be able to see it from the road and whatnot. Um, we made it, uh, and that was the best place that we could come up with. That dirt that was hauled in there and everything was hauled in there before we decided to put the site there, okay? So, we did go through, we, we talked to the Wiley's and everything else. We got. Uh, what was it? Uh, N D G or something like that, whatever the place was. They went down, they said, okay, this is what you need to do to make it, uh, up to, up to whatever standards it needs to be. Okay, so, and then the Wiley's gave us a list of, of things that they wanted to see. Yes, we did everything that they wanted to do. Um, the retention ponds, the, the, the hill, everything was done exactly to what they wanted and we wanted. To make it so that the water didn't run onto their parcel. There is a culvert there for that water to run across the street also. So, um. We did everything that we were supposed to do. Yes, we never figured for a hundred year storm by storm. I ha- I see no reason to go and say that, you know, that, uh, all this brush is gonna fill this and. You guys were smart enough to stop it before this brush gets filled in and you need huge.
You're processing it one or two times of.
So, so it's not gonna get to where we need to bring big loaders in and whatnot.
You know, that was part of. What I said originally, we don't have the equipment that these other places that are handling.
Yes, and, and they're taking a huge burden too, you guys. I mean, even if we take some, they're taking a huge burden. Um, which is gonna cost a ton of money. So, does the city of Tawski have certain hours that they do their, uh, leaf drop off and, and stump in?
The cities of the place that right across the street, they watch it, yes.
Is there hours, okay. Now they have. They have houses a lot closer than we do too.
I mean, the Wiley's aren't. Against it anymore. We just wanna start opening it and if something, and if it goes smoothly. Then August or September, we can open it to more. Number one, we don't have somebody to chop it. We don't have somebody to load it into the big container, so that's why we're starting small.
Okay, so why don't?
I'm sorry. Give me your question again.
Why don't we have somebody to, to chop it and load it?
Because. Back in March, I brought. Five H's proposal and they've done it for the last eight years. I brought through proposal. And it was rejected and they would, would chop it. And clean up the site weekly. And then for the last, ever since it opened, I personally have used my machinery to load it in the.
Which has also become an issue within the township.
And just, I'm just trying to work off memory from, I've been in all these meetings. Wasn't it like the five H? Wasn't the issue that, that was, there was no proposal, it just went to them and said, we're gonna do it?
There's no other.
Nobody solicited any other quotes, but that was the issue not.
But we also don't have somebody to load it. I mean, the whole point of it is.
So why don't we though? Did somebody go off?
At three minutes.
If he didn't do it, then somebody else should have, right?
But they didn't go off for bids, he just kept doing it.
It wasn't quite like that.
Then why didn't it go up for bids?
Who's responsible for issuing bids? There's the.
Not necessarily.
But he didn't do it.
You're talking about in previous years.
But you guys want this open, so why like? Go with the committee and try it. If it doesn't work, go back to the board and do it the way you wanna do it. That's what it sounds like.
So, so let me ask you this. Can you get it open before July fourth or whatever?
But two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. I mean, by the time we get the cameras installed and the gate installed, it's gonna be July fourth. And we're opening it Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so you can't do it July first, cause that's the middle of the week, right? I mean, what is the point of having a committee and having us come up with a recommendation, you're gonna shoot it down?
Just maybe help bring some, uh, organization to within discussion. I know that there were losses transpired in the past and people have, I have things to say. How they feel about some of those things that's transpired, but really the purpose of where we are now. Is not to relitigate what occurred in the past, relive it. Face blame, it's a waste, it's a waste we're done frankly right now. The, the, the site needs an operations plan. Needs a red night operations plan that's monitored and handled in a businesslike way. This site hasn't had that to, to date. The committee has come up with a modest. Beginning operations plan while they probably intend to continue to study. The other issues about, uh, their bigger, uh, priorities and whatnot, perhaps. Hope for, uh, according with Lindsay, uh, with an economy recycling. And, and getting maybe a, a more sophisticated level. But right now, as a, with the amount of factual information that's available to the committee and to the board. It seems that that's really the one point of discussion is what is, uh, what should the operations plan be now? In light of fact, there are less risks and benefits in opening. And that's something that the environmental committee has studied, is reporting back now. And that, and what motivated somebody to go planning or have a grievances beside the point? We're responsible for that land, we're liable if something goes wrong, we need an operations plan. Doesn't matter who complains, it needs to be done.
Thank you.
I, I just have one question is, is, uh, we're gonna monitor this cameras. What if we identify someone illegally dumping? Where's the report?
Contact them.
Why you don't know who it is?
Well, you could report him for the private trespass, if, if it's posted.
We have no ordinance for it.
Who, who gets the camera line? The environmental committee, there'll be two or three of us that will have it.
One more thing.
Quickly.
If you're gonna, if the committee is doing all this, then I don't think you should have John Q. Public open and posting the gates, committee should.
Or the park or anybody on a board, anybody that's on a board could do it.
If the volunteer, they're, they're more than willing to do it, they walk.
They live next door.
It's not like. Exactly.
And Tammy didn't want me to say that in the past, they have had to hire lawyers to deal with the issue when it was. The flooding going on at the burdens.
Somebody make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the collection, collection site environmental many recommendations.
Okay. Any more discussion? And, and so you're talking about, you're talking about this.
I'm good with that. I'll just add, let's. Uh, next meeting, let's. Just see how it's going and it looks like we need to open up for.
All favors say aye. Any of both? So. I guess you have to bring us. You have to bring us agreements with, with Jake Way and with five H or somebody for the loading. Is, you know, before July fourth.
Definitely will get that.
And the next thing is driveway repair. I don't know if you wanna do anything with it or leave it, it's kinda late. I haven't just leave it for this year. You know, the, the real time to do that is November one. Okay, next thing is R T H landscaping. So. In your path. Now, we need. Three proposals. I interviewed with four people and we got three proposals.
I feel like these three things are totally different. It's really hard to follow. I feel like there's no scope of work that they could have. I, I mean, it, it's really hard to compare apples to apples, kinda like apples to oranges.
Well, this one gave nothing as a diagram of what they wanted to do.
He gave. He gave off that little plan that I had, you know, we walked and we all of them.
He gave one page. And he, or his, or his quote where Dross. You know, this was David Hoffman. Dross came up with eight pages. And then Todd Service. He came up with at least eight pages. At least.
You know, and, and theirs were.
He included some pictures.
Theirs were, um. They itemized it, you know? He didn't give us the itemizing, he gave us the end price.
Is this like a design of the country?
I guess you'd say that it was, it was, you know, we had a, we had a design, it wasn't fancy, it was on a single page and. You know, I did the same walk around with each one of them and. Had questions answered and. Ask questions and.
Well, I think there's some things in here that we don't need, first of all, more trees, we don't need more trees. Well, that's something that should have been taken out of all of them. That's my opinion.
In my opinion, we don't need to. Extend the retaining wall in the back.
In the back row, you have your hand up.
Is this as part of, like, the discussion for the construction budget that we? Said last month, we were gonna talk about this month and this month, now we're pushing it to next month, so isn't this part of the? Landscaping part of the construction process?
No, this is the first month that we've had anything to. Anything to put a price with a quantity.
But isn't this part, the reason why we're doing landscaping is because you did some construction?
Yes.
Okay, so it's part of the construction budget that we still are not discussing. That was put off from last month to this month.
It, it wasn't in the construction budget. This is on top of it.
Okay.
The other thing that's on the agenda that was carried forward is we have an issue with, um. The architect that we had. Over, we feel overcharged us because he missed some things and so we got charged for those, so we have our lawyer looking into trying to recoup some of that money. So that's the, what the discussion is that we're waiting for him to come back with.
Okay, so we're going to discuss the construction budget at the next meeting.
Hopefully.
Okay.
And it's, I mean, it's just talking about what we feel that. He overcharged us for things that should have been put in the design.
But so the next thing is gonna be, you know, the attorney, which might still be in a closed session.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so I just want, don't want her to get hopes of this going with answers subsequently.
So I gathered Todd Services about eighty-four thousand, from my little scratch I just hear.
Todd Service is eighty-five thousand, two hundred seventy-nine. And that's for the field stone. For the retaining wall block, it's a hundred and ten five.
Where are you getting that from?
Well, I added.
So if you go with the coda wall, that's. That, if you go with the. Natural boulder option, it's less, it's fifty thousand or thirty, thirty thousand less.
Why do you gotta add the, the block wall?
Because he has it all itemized. He has.
Why didn't they do it when they did that?
Don't know.
So it doesn't need to be done.
He can put stone in there.
Just to clarify, since everyone's interested, pardon for, reject. What is purpose, can you make it clear to us what the purpose of the landscaping is? Is it a necessity? Is it a? A, a, an environmental concern of some nature or erosion concern versus aesthetics? I think probably we, I wonder, you know, how much? Is it okay or something if it's mostly aesthetics in a place is rarely.
It's a little bit erosion. And it's aesthetics and it's, um, like replace the berm that's out here.
And that, what function does that serve?
The berm, well, it plays the concrete block out here.
From the original construction that. Trying to remember, but the, something to do with the frost finds where the new addition has the footings for the frost where. This wall does not have. Footings, it's just basically built on a slab.
The puddings are.
To protect the puddings, so, or protect the ba- the bottom part there from the frost.
You'd have to go that high up the building?
Well, the, the block wall goes that high, it goes like the bottom window.
You're not really considering like a bunch of bowling balls, right?
The way it looks.
That's disgustingly ugly. Are we really considering that? The difference of thirty thousand dollars, but it's so ugly.
I'm sure it'll look better.
Though, I mean, those are just, I don't think those are actual.
The same size, so.
What we did was. Ask people for the coda wall, which are, are little concrete blocks. And then we asked them for a price on, um. Natural field stone. And two of the people. Rejected that and said, no, it doesn't belong there. Um, David Hoffman. Came back and said that it doesn't belong there and. I was hoping that, that Dross would do it, cause they got some like really cool big rock walls out there. And he came back and like a, a week later, and I don't know whether he talked to his designers or his engineers or something, but he said, you know. I'm not going to bid that, I feel it doesn't. Belong in this application.
So I know the picture doesn't do justice, but if you go up Mitchell there, you'll see the house there in the corner of Blackwood and, you know, it's got the field stone. And that looks nice, that's the thing.
But to save money, why can't they just put the timber out there and fill it in and leave that alone? Makes sense.
In another twenty years, we can come back and replace it.
That's been there for fifty, so how many times you have to replace it?
Well, it hasn't been there for fifty. When I came, after I came here, we put the ones up on top that are.
That's because you wanted drain tile away from the building.
They're, they're, but the others are rotted.
I think if you're gonna, you got brick on the side of the building. I think stone's gonna look silly, cause you don't break a house and then put a stone fire. Cause you don't break a house and then put a stone fireplace on, no, that would look completely ignorant. And I think the stone, the the, I love stone, don't get me wrong, but it's not the right place for it. And I think there's a lot more maintenance to stone than there is for those those blocks from Montigny.
Well, isn't there another type of blocks that's like that? I mean, that is cheaper than the Kodak or whatever you call it.
Not really.
Well, I thought that our last quote that we got back a year or so ago, that it was using a different type of block.
It was actually using the same thing and. And it was like eighty-four thousand.
Now, we had another quote that it was not using the same thing. Al, what was the name of the person that? We had last time, you remember? That sent us the quote that was a different type of material.
It's not the same thing.
Limestone?
They they have different square footages on each of these.
Probably, are they any were close?
I don't know.
You know.
Paver patio, one has a cement patio.
Basically, what the, to give you a synopsis of what we're looking at here is. The berm out front here, the lawn. It's got the quotes in there for the back retaining wall to extend that out into the curb, down into the curb more. Outside the the conference room and Suzanne's office here, with a little patio out there. Uh, because there is a door there, it's not an exit door, emergency exit. But it's a door, but in order for us to get occupancy permit, we have to have a patio put out there. But it's also nice to have the picnic table out there if you wanna go out there and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, stone, kind of a drip edge around the north side of the building there for the rain to come down and get.
And that continues all the way back through the. The cable boxes and the generator and, you know, cleans that whole area up so it doesn't have any mold.
Right, but where the retaining wall is, you could put fiber down and fill that with stone like you're gonna go around the building. That's cheaper than putting the retaining wall longer. You just save money by not buying the retaining wall.
I don't think we need the retaining wall extended.
Oh, and some trees added.
And trees, we got, like Susan said, we got enough trees around here. These ones, like we, how many have we removed off this property in twenty-six years?
My opinion is we we do the necessities, the grass, the stone, the patio, the walls. And wait on the rest, you know, next year we might decide, oh, we need a tree over here, or we need a tree over here. Instead of let let it all that start.
You know, and then, you know, that's, that's fine.
What's your butt?
Butt. When you have equipment there. You know.
Yeah, but if we're not doing it back portion. We have all kinds of trees out there, looks lovely.
What's the purpose, purpose to extend the uh. Wall right there.
The retaining walls to to lessen the grade to make it so that it can be clean paint.
So if you put rocks there, you don't have to maintain them.
Rocks are understanding.
You put fibers so weeds don't grow up and you put rocks on.
As a rocker.
It's it's like like this.
Yeah, but rocks would, you're not gonna be on a motor if you put grass in there.
You're gonna.
Cause it was like this.
You're gonna be able to maintain it on top and and on the bottom. So.
We need to save money. So. I would entertain doing David Hoffman's minus number two and number six right now.
Well, we need to do a revised price.
Right.
And more of a breakdown of what each thing is.
Can you just say what that would take out? It would take out a hundred, the extension of the existing wall and then the ten mixed trees.
Which how much would that save?
But it doesn't, there's no cost, he has one.
He just has one price thing.
Oh, so it's gotta break it down the next year.
You know, the the other guy has like twenty-two thousand in for that wall that there.
And five thousand for. Trees, I guess.
Trees are fairly cheap.
Provide the specifications of that, all the vendors, their chest and devices. I mean, I I.
You know, they 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 all had the same talk and this is what they come up with and, you know. I'm kinda with Carrie, David has one price, but he's lowest and he's a, at least a. A two-generation family in sort of township. He's already lost.
But if you drop the wall and the trees, it's gonna be a little bit lower.
Yeah, longest get a revised cost on it.
Bring it back.
Bring it back.
Yeah, it wouldn't be bad to ask an itemized, see you're sure what you're.
Yeah.
No, it would be, it should.
You know. You know, it's, it's a little bit of a time crunch to give him the job so we can get it started and then.
So we can make a motion, I could make a motion to accept David Hoffman's landscaping proposal. Minus number two and number six. With a cap at. Seventy thousand dollars. Which should probably, it should be less than that.
Fourteen, I think that's generous.
Okay, say no, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars.
I think that's generous, I missed them two jobs.
The wall here was twenty-one thousand, it's not gonna be bad.
What does Dross have in there for that wall back there?
Yeah, I don't see theirs actually. Favor edge truckers. I don't know, maybe. They don't have it. Retaining wall. So it's twenty-eight thousand for the other. I would say no, not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, and it'll probably be lower, so.
Well, we're not gonna tell them seven thousand, they're gonna take two off.
I am not gonna tell him seventy thousand.
Our motion is not to exceed seventy thousand.
Right, yes, yeah, he not here tonight, so he would know.
Timeline.
But I don't see him up there either, he probably still working. Yeah. No, I'll I'll call him. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussions? And it's number two and number six. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next thing is Peggy's gardening. So. I didn't realize that Peggy's gardening on here. I I actually, when I gave it, had taken it off. So, no, I have nothing to offer you except what I brought you last month.
Did you contact anybody else?
There's nobody to contact.
Well, I'm sure there's a lot of people, would you like me to do it?
You know, like, like we, you know, actually it's too late, you know, it's.
Doesn't hurt to ask them.
We've already used Hollies and we've used um Evergreen and. You know, some of these others and Peggy's just. Bit resort townships.
I'll reach out to him and thank him.
Well, and it's open to that discussion of this, I, you know, you know, on behalf of Park City, maybe just, just clarification on. You know, I'm totally on with understanding multiple proposals to that, but with. Clarification is that, is that every year events that would do it have Peggy's? You know, see who else is out there competing with Peggy's every year, he's gonna have a very consistent service. And quality service that we perceive from them, you know, as we were going through that budget, our budget, that's what stuck out there and that, I think that'd be a question that are. Maybe we want from you all is that, would that be every year competing with all of this?
That would be my expectation, because being a township trustee, I wanna be a good steward of our taxpayer's money. So um I've brought it up at many meetings that I won't vote on anything unless there's multiple quotes.
Even after multiple years of service and.
Because then that will sharpen the pen, hopefully, because we've run into this. I've run into this and many other avenues in my life where I've used the same contractor over and over. And they just get used to it, so then they don't sharpen their pencils, so I think it's an opportunity. For the township to be able to have people give other people chances um and to sharpen their pencils.
Okay.
Is it something that we're gonna be able to get done this year with the weddings and the parties and. Graduation, open houses and everything that are going on down there, we should have flowers.
Well. We should have gotten more quotes last month, which has been since February. For March, being brought up at meetings to have more than one quote, it was never advertised out there. I mean, everybody has to have a fair chance to do it.
Yeah, that's true, but I, you know, I also understand the concept, when I was the recreation director of the city, there was a lot of times that. You know, we might have put it out there, we didn't get them, it was with the same person we always use, and because we were so satisfied. With what we usually got from whoever the vendor was. Then we, you know, stuck with them because it was already in the budget, and so then it worked out a lot better. As they were used to us, we were used to them and. The service worked out a lot better.
What do you do, don't get. And you put it out there and the people just don't turn.
Well, then if you only get one, then that's you take, but at least everybody's had the chance to quote on.
Okay, moving on, so actually, I wanna go back to the compo site for for just a minute. And. Tomorrow. The compo site is scheduled for um. For dust control. Dust, dust control. Well, anymore you can't call somebody and have them do it like you used to be able to. This stuff comes through the Emma County Road Commission and it comes from downstate and they come when they.
If you're gonna open it July fourth, then go ahead and do that because then it'll be done.
It'll be done, that's, well, that's what I'm asking is.
I mean, that's.
You know, it'll be another six weeks to two months before they come back. You know, we've, we've always tried to keep the dust down for the neighbors.
It's great.
I just wanted you guys to know that and I guess bless it or. You know, it's it's one of those maintenance things that you just kind of.
So Mr. Rainey, with that done, we added to the proposal that we just reached you. Because will that happen every year?
Well, it happens like two times a year.
So, probably needs to be.
And and I don't know, we've just always, the gate has always been open and they just, they just come and do it when they do um. Pioneer Trails and they do um Cherry Lane and some other road from the area, they just.
So it's part of them right now?
Yeah. Okay. Number five is common angle three sixty-five conversion. Working on it.
I've got Gina today and she has a meeting with Common Angle on Friday.
It's Friday?
Yes.
My computer will not work with.
Common Angle notify you?
I was calling, talking to them and he told me it won't work with it because it's too old.
So, did he offer you a new one or? Are you gonna get a new?
I'm not gonna worry about it right at this moment.
Alright.
Next is land division payment to assessor. You know, this is like the. Second or third month that that's been on here.
Can you describe what that is? Payment to assessor, what are we talking about, I'm sorry.
A a couple of years ago, the Township Board. Agreed to pay me a hundred and fifty dollars for each land division. And there was. Like eight this year. And I gave them a bill for two or three months ago and. Like ignoring it.
That in the budget?
Yes.
But did that part of the assessor's duty or no?
Yes, it is.
It's it's not necessarily the state tax commission's list of duties for the assessor.
Is it part of the job description for the township assessor?
It is not.
According to the MTA, it is.
Yes. Is there a paid fee scheduled for a township?
Title Township Assessor and specific duties and responsibilities. Number four is overseas maintenance of department, departmental files, including property records, cards, physical data. Legal descriptions, splits and combinations of parcels and ownership transfers strives to identify new and improved methods of carrying out responsibilities of the department. This is off the MTA website for the assessor.
Well, that's not necessarily state tax mission, state tax commission kind of puts it out to the side.
Well, it's already taken. So that's, that's already part of the Michigan tax assessor's. Description of what an assessor should be doing.
This is put out by the Township Association.
Okay, so that.
Not the state.
Michigan MTA. Are you paid by the state?
I'm paid by the Township Board.
And that's, that's a township assessor description?
If we go to the Michigan Township Association website and I looked under assessor.
Yeah.
This is what came up as the description for the assessor and their duties.
So the discussion is, do you adopt that or not?
Covered in the pay. Alright.
Well. The Township Board agreed to pay it several years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years.
For two months, three months, and then that also you agreed that you were gonna quit after three months. And you took that back, so I think we should take back that we agreed to pay you that amount of money because it's included in your. Job duty.
The guy before me got it. The guy before me got it.
For those of us that aren't.
Right, is there a job description of that? It was in a motion. Because Mr. Wheaton resigned as supervisor or as the supervisor.
I have one question. You, is the board meet other than this one time a month? To, to discuss some of this stuff ahead of time? So it doesn't run out for hours on something?
We can't because we.
I mean, you talk about thirty days and, and can't find time for two meetings during that thirty days? I mean, you get paid.
You also can meet with each other.
For a certain amount.
Yeah, we can't meet all together.
So you hash everything out in this public meeting.
David White. Does the county have like a, a informal meeting? You, you have like a formal meeting and then before that you have an informal one, don't you?
On the board, we have what we call work session, which was first meeting. Then we had the main meeting and the second meeting. But what we're finding out, we were just approving everything from the work session. Actually, we make it two meetings a month. And do the work instead of following the road twice. We had the meeting and, and first meeting a month, which is, which is the first Monday in the morning. Yeah, first Monday of the month, then we're having one, the third, the second Tuesday, whatever, one Thursday.
So, so it just makes your overall agenda smaller?
You're getting more things. We're getting, we were discussing everything, we were discussing everything and then carried it over to the next meeting and it just didn't make sense. So it was my idea. We said, well, why are we doing this twice over when you started to meet? It doesn't go to per diems anymore. It doesn't make any difference. How many meetings we had.
I'm sorry, but it seems like a lot of these things that are issues that you don't know what he's doing, he don't know what she's doing. It seems like if you got together one other time and kinda. Comes an agenda that's organized that, that we've talked about this, this is what kind of what we decide in behind closed doors.
You can't. Too.
Well, that's a good way to work. You could, you had to talk to them.
Yeah, but the only means that you can't have the core. Five, five member board, so we can't, we can do one-on-one, but that's it. But then you gotta be careful and not do the round robin where Kerry said this and then I go to Suzanne and Suzanne said this and then. You know, and go to Tim and well Suzanne and Kerry said this and.
Well, actually, there are a lot to lobby and I think he sure is a request, those rules. Because you know, it's not meant, it's mentioned so that I think most things happen in, out in the open. It's not mentioned.
Problem is that they're too busy fighting amongst themselves to take care of what's going on in the township. That's my opinion. They need to figure out. What is best for township people too.
Make a motion on what's on the table right now and make a decision. I was here last month and I did this already again and now we're doing it again. If it's in the job description, if there's a job description, that might be a problem. It should be written out exactly what the assessor does. And then that is what he's paid for and then there's no questions. It's black and white.
The state tax commission is, is by ultimate boss. You know, they're the ones that.
So if you're already paid for in your salary, there's no question on the table about paying it again.
How, how do we revisit this or how do we get this, this issue resolved as far as, so you can get it off your.
And I can't address that at this moment. Okay.
I request that a board member come up with a, study it and come up with a resolution as to what the job description should be. To everybody's benefit, to have a common understanding. It's not trivium, it's just then make clear, gain clarity. And then you can decide what payment.
Okay, you have a great resource in the MTA website.
Resolutions for twenty twenty-five pay raises is next.
So, is that tabled?
I think I'm supposed to table it till next meeting.
Your second.
My second.
Any discussion? All favors say aye.
In the next meeting, we should get a job description.
Yeah, and any. Anything where it was documented, because I don't.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Okay. I make a motion. That the clerk's salary will be twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for. Twenty, twenty-five. Annually or?
I support.
Okay. Any discussion? All favors say aye. Aye. Any opposed? I make a motion that the treasurer's salary will be set at thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Annually. Okay, any discussion? All favors say aye. I make a motion that the supervisor's salary shall be set at thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars annually.
Public comment?
Wait, hang on just a minute.
I support.
Okay.
I don't know why we're considering any rates for Mr. Wheaton. On November twenty-sixth, the state tax commission wrote him a letter saying. The assessor disciplinary advisory committee determined that further disciplinary action is warranted regarding your assessor certification. Reason for that is Mr. Wheaton purchased an investment property in fifty-eight twenty-two Resort Pike. Which he did an assessment on himself, which is a conflict of interest. And he grossly undervalued that property compared to other properties in the area. As a result, the state is requiring him to take an ethics class. Let me say that again, an ethics class. As well as a cost and depreciation class in order to avoid being sent to the disciplinary committee. Now also, let's face it, Mr. Wheaton, by undervaluing his property for tax purposes, is saving, according to the Toscany News. About the four thousand dollars a year in property taxes.
So let me, let me, let me stop you right there.
Bob has already given himself without anyone's permission.
Let me stop you right there. The information that you're talking about is incorrect. And I'm not sure why you've never come in my office and talked to me about this. You know? But the, the information that, that you just spewed out here was slanderous to me and uh. It's incorrect.
Bob, you were cited, you have to take an ethics class because of what you did with valuing the investment property.
No doubt about it.
Then you don't deserve.
I have to take depreciation.
And you don't deserve a raise because you've already given yourself a raise by undervaluing your property. I've looked at the numbers. It's way under.
My property is not undervalued, but that's not the argument for here. So.
Have you had a independent assessor look at that property?
I actually did.
Do you have a report of that?
Okay, I see it. I think that is something that us as a board and you being out of it should have looked at and hired somebody to do. That is not your job to do that, being situated.
Well, it, it is my job. There are no. No stipulations in the state tax commission's thing for the assessor. Who's a supervisor and living in his area of assessing his own home. State doesn't have anything that says.
Does have a conflict of interest statute.
Doesn't have anything that says you shall give some other person.
No, but due to the what happened with the state, you going, then I think us as a board need to hire somebody. To reassess your five or six parcels that you have.
I would support that whole part of.
Just to make sure that it's all the way that it should be.
So let me say this. Emmett, you know, it's a little late for that because it's changed a lot. But Emmett County sent their appraiser out who carries the same certification I do, like. I think it was August sixth or eighth to do their sales review of it. They go to, most houses is selling and do a review of it and unbeknownst to me. They came up with exactly the same thing I did.
Bob, the state tax commission stated in their findings, you did not provide adequate justification.
I know.
Actions that occurred.
You know, you're dismissing the state of Michigan, but you want to come back to the state of Michigan. As the rules you follow to get paid extra money as an assessor and charge the taxpayers a hundred and fifty dollars for a land split. Which you're saying, well, I know, you're dismissing the legal board at which you want to claim a hundred and fifty dollars per assessment. Doesn't happen. Can't happen.
I, I kinda don't follow that.
I, I've worked in, I've worked in local government and I know if I was found. That I need to take an ethics class to keep my job, my board would not be working to give him their raise.
So what's your name?
Brad Colter.
Don Colter. So. You folks should come in my office and I'll explain this to you.
No, we're talking about your salary right now. You, you, you have to take an ethics class to keep your assessor places.
I don't need anything to be unquote hard. We're in a public forum, having discussions about public matters. That's what we're here to discuss. A raise for you, which is public and we're, we're just having open discussion about it.
Okay. So, and I have somebody from Zoom in, let's see, Kevin. Okay. What was it?
It's Bill, but it's not.
You might be able to type his comments.
Go on where the microphone is. There's still the red thing on there, probably up there, over by Bill's name.
It was like right here, I have to unmute, but it's not.
Well, there's a couple of comments I can make on this also. It goes from the supervisor and into the assessor praises. Um, the last five years, you have been late turning in your assessment role. Which this year it was a hundred and forty dollar fees.
I've been late?
Yep.
Oh.
And then it was a hundred dollars in twenty-two, it was sixty-two dollars in twenty-three. Um, they said.
What about state fines?
Emmett County fines.
Do you wanna know what that's about?
Yeah, because they send them all in together and if yours comes in late, they send yours late. Right. But that's the point. If everybody else in Emmett County can get there on time. Also, I know that there's property out there that's not on the tax rule. The person has had, one of them is, they've had their house completed for three years. And it still is a vacant lot. Or in the process. So somehow.
You should tell me who that is.
You should know who that is. Don't you get permits from the county that say that people have finished their?
You go down them. So, so let's go back to the late thing. Emmett County, you have from December thirty-first, which is tax day. And Emmett County wants you to have your role completely done by, like, February fourth.
Which I get deadlines. I have to have mine in by. My last time to collect taxes is on February twenty-eighth and I have to have them in by the time.
You can't do all the work in that time.
Everybody else does.
They do not. Not when you have a township the size of Resort. You know, it's easy enough to sit here and say, everybody else does, but they don't.
You still can't figure it out?
Still not letting us do it.
So, so whose houses?
I can not give them it out. There's more than one.
I don't know. We get permits sometimes.
Well, as a taxpayer, I will be sure that information is only appropriate.
The person is contacting. The person is gonna contact.
If, wanna do it, okay, private, that's fine, but.
When I came here and when I started assessing in two thousand nine or ten. The last assessor hadn't put any room in for like five years. And at that time, there wasn't the GIS and the overheads and stuff. You had to kind of go back and search through the permits and. And there was just like the whole overhead, you know, it seemed.
I think we should still think there's somebody though too.
Well, I can't do it to anybody.
Oh, you can't do it to anybody?
No.
No, if you can hear, log off and log back on.
No, I said you can't do it for anybody though.
Yeah, no matter who I try to click to unmute, it won't.
Uh, it unmuted me Rufus.
Oh, there you are. You're working.
Yep. You can mute me now.
Okay, no. For some reason I can't do Bill.
But when you click.
Around his name, I think. You see how when you went to Tammy? The green box was around it when you could unmute it?
It highlights it when they talk.
Yeah.
I think all you can do is apologize for technical difficulties.
Okay, I'm still trying to learn this.
Okay, after discussion, I'm gonna retract my support.
Okay, is your support by anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to, to the assessor. Um, the assessor in the amount of fifty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars annually. Is your support for that? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to trustees. The trustees would get a salary of nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars annually.
I'd just like to make a point and nothing against Kerry or Tim, but they've just come on board. So I think a raise is not really warranted right now. That's my personal feelings. Well.
You know, I, I think it would be my point that I want them to continue to be engaged and learn and.
I think they're engaged and learning what I need.
Well.
They made seven hundred and something of meetings.
Well, I'll make, while I've already made that motion, is there a second for it? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Um, we'll move on to zoning change for the ordinance.
Can I make a motion for some other people though?
We have to do the rest of the, you have to do the orderlies and then the sheet, sure.
I'd like to make a motion that the deputy supervisor clerk and treasurer, the precinct workers, the election worker and the webmaster all get the three percent raise.
So, do you wanna do the whole sheet?
No.
No.
I think as far as our per diems.
Talking with other clerks around the state, we're one of the higher paid per diems in the state. So we're above and beyond what the other jurisdictions are getting. So in my opinion, the, the per diems for the meetings and that those can wait. Are, are these?
So just an example for a per diem, I don't know if ever anybody knows, but um, the planning commission, a member gets a hundred and twelve dollars a meeting. Um, the environmental member gets eighty-two dollars a meeting. The board of review gets about a hundred and ten dollars a meeting. Recreation gets eighty-two oh one. Um, the secretary and the chair do get more on all the committees. I actually had one gentleman come in and he didn't even know he got paid.
Okay, so restate your motion.
I would like to think that the deputy supervisor, deputy clerk, deputy treasurer, the precinct worker for the election, the election chair and the webmaster all receive a three percent raise.
Is there a second for that?
I'll support it.
Okay. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Um. Do you wanna talk about this next thing, Jim?
Uh, oh, yeah, for the ordinance, yeah. So this is in, um, regards to, um, a planning commission meeting we had, um, back in February, but it's to amend section one five zero 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 uh, C two of the resort township zoning ordinance. Um, basically what that section of the ordinance, um, pertains to is the density bonus um, for multi-family, uh, in or apartment building, um, units for open space. So, you go to page nine, um, on the attachment on the package, you will see the strike there, but basically we had a note in our ordinance that steep slopes greater than thirty-three percent would not be included uh, in that density bonus calculation. And as a planning commission board, um, unanimously approved striking that so that steep slopes would now be included. Um, that was done to, uh, be consistent with the county and surrounding townships. So we were the only one that discounted slope over thirty-three percent. So that was.
You explained it very well this morning.
Probably better than what I am not scratching it. So with that, is there any discussion, questions? So I will, um, I'll make a motion to approve the planning permissions, um, modification to section one five zero zero C two of the resort township zoning ordinance.
I support.
Any more questions? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
We have to do a vote call on this because it's an ordinance.
I think that you're just in case.
Ween?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Klingelsmith?
Yes.
And Walshheimer, yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Um, next thing is spray for spiders and wasps. Um, it's been on there for a few months and.
I don't think we need it yet.
I don't know, I've seen a lot of dogs around them, but.
It ends up subsiding.
Um, but they kinda have just finished painting out here, so probably not a thing to do right now. Um, okay, number four is brush cleanup. Township hall and pioneer trails. So, I think what I'm gonna propose to you is that resort township rent of brush chipper or maybe a week, maybe a couple of three-day periods or something. And, um, we need to use it out along our property before the landscapers get started out here and, you know. I talked to Fred about it and he's willing to have his people do it. But he goes, I don't have, I have to rent one. And.
He actually had one on that vice sale and trade thing that was like two thousand dollars or something. It looked really nice.
Yeah, so. I would like to also use it down at Pioneer Trails. The trails are open now. I don't know if any of you have been there. But, but all the trails are open and, and the pine logs have been removed as much as are gonna be removed. And, uh, I would offer to take my tractor and haul it back through the, the smaller ones you can take back through there and I've talked to a couple individuals about getting roots together that would work for a couple hours at a time and so, I don't know, it's not like you can go and get one for an afternoon and, and use it. And they're like, I think nine hundred dollars a, a week. So, I don't know. That's something you're interested in? And, you know, I, when Fred and I were talking about the other day, you know, like he can use it for a day here. And at the same time, we need to hire a tree service here. Because we've got, number one, we've got the, um, hedge out here that needs attention. We've got the, there's a dead tree out here. There's a big dead beech tree in the back that's aimed right for our parking lot. And there's some other hangers, um, kinda close enough that we oughta take care of them. So, I don't know. Is that something that you kinda wanna put together and?
We look at that one next month.
Well, you get some quotes, um, and we.
With our scope of work.
Make a decision next month.
Yeah, all the scope of work is chop the brush, you know.
Well, no, you can get the tree choppers.
About the trees.
But the trees, let's get a quote on you to do them or someone can do it.
Okay, that's not what you said. So, so get a quote from a couple of, of tree people.
You had moved on, so we moved on. Quote of the timeframe.
Do you remember, if you have tree guys out here, does it make sense? I mean, they're probably gonna bring a brusher anyways. Do it all at once. I mean, if they're gonna.
That's what they do, yeah.
Good, yeah. I mean, as opposed to doing, my only concern with is if you have volunteers with those damn brush chippers.
But I think the volunteers are gonna be here.
Volunteers aren't gonna, your volunteers are gonna be pioneer trail.
No, my, my point with volunteers was, do you really want volunteers with the chipper?
Um.
Really rugged and, you know.
I, I mean.
The liability to the township.
Somebody got hurt?
I don't know, if somebody gets hurt with that, it means they get sucked into the.
Push it to the side, pull it out of the way. Well, it is pushed to the side right now and, and there is, a lot.
Yeah.
Some places, there's a lot.
Three, I feel it, it's pretty scary, uh, pretty scary stuff. I just mean, there would be, I would seem to be a hell of a liability there. You have volunteers doing that.
I don't know. People went back in pioneer trails with a chainsaw and I don't know who they were, but.
Right, but they were on their own accord. They weren't helping you.
Yeah, but they were, they were still there and they were still had a chainsaw cutting wood.
Well, they can do it a lot in the park, state parks and stuff, if you people volunteer during there.
So, so I guess, what are you thinking or not thinking?
Let's just get a number for the trees here and the, and the little bit of brush here.
Uh, there's more, a little bit of brush, cause I guess I'd probably ask Fred to do like the first layer of trees back.
But I want that big dead tree with the holes left there because I'm sure an owl's gonna live in there.
Uh, that's good.
Don't be thinking my tree down.
Yeah.
I have a little comment on, uh, doing volunteerism and, uh, a lot of the local agencies are, were doing liability waivers for that. So that's something that is considered, but I do think the opportunity of volunteers step up and serve our township is really valuable and important. But if there is that concern, so, you know, liability is important.
And I think they did do that, like at the state parks and that they had on site something.
Yeah, conservancy properties and things like that. So that could be something.
That's a good, very good idea.
Yeah, there you go.
Good idea.
Okay, um. Moving on to Bob Gullidge, memorated plate.
Fine.
So. Parks and Rec has approved this. Um, it would, it would kinda turn out like the second page, I think. And it's seven hundred dollars.
You don't wanna burst your bubble, but we as a township cannot purchase that one township money. I asked the auditor. She said, if you want to take, get a collection and have a collection, you know, for, then you can do it. But we cannot, because when we did Donna's, we didn't purchase Donna's, we did a collection.
Well.
So somehow, in order to get.
Okay.
What way was that done for Donna to collect that?
Oh, I, I think Lucy kinda headed that one up and everybody just kinda donated some money to it.
And it wasn't seven hundred dollars?
No, it was just a little one. But also, I did also get a couple other places that you can maybe get a another quote from to see if maybe they're here in town.
Will you share that with him, Suzanne?
I will. Yep, I asked, um, the parks director, city park director, because they had some, um.
One thing I've just circulated in the, in the blast and on the website, no reason, we need.
So, moving on, you all saw that the dock at Morford Road got destroyed on last Thursday.
Oh.
Um. Uh, guy hooked his, hooked his boat to it. And was to pull the trailer out and forgot that he had the trailer hooked to the dock there.
See.
Oh, okay. So, um.
You might go and make a claim against his insurance.
Well, he's agreed, we know who it is and he's agreed to pay for it. And I said to him, you know, you have insurance that would pay for this, so I don't wanna use that, so. So, um, I've not sent this to him yet. But it comes up to be seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars to get the dock back in the water.
I'm sure it's.
Yeah.
Does he know that amount?
Not yet. Not yet.
But doesn't.
You know, the same thing, as you know, happened last year. And that was like nine thousand or something. Our insurance paid for most of it, we had to pay a deductible and.
So these are all gonna be new boards, because I know that some of the boards that I was seeing on from Fred, that he took a picture of, were not new boards, so these should all be new board prices.
So, some of these, where it says for refurbished section.
New section and for refurbished.
But it was the boards were.
I think they took the boards off the new ones and put on the put on the bad ones. So, um, you know, there's a bill in, in your.
For what, eight seventy?
No. Or, I don't remember what it's for. It's for installing it for eleven fifty and it's for for repairing it a couple times already this spring to get it back into it. So it's gonna, hold as low as there, if I put it in here, told it. So. Um, you know, the eight seventy is when they went and took it out. And then they had disposal fees. So, I don't know if we need a motion for this or it's just an FYI, but.
I guess we should get a motion and put it in the books that that man's gonna pay.
Right. All right.
I mean, if you don't know who's name at least, put the add, say the address. I guess that'd make any difference about here.
Fifty-two hundred late girl for.
Really, can I play your stop? Cause you know what the, um, sign by our houses for work, that's starting for that.
Intertown Road.
What are they gonna do?
They're gonna redo Intertown from Resort Fight to Cemetery.
Oh, the rest of it.
Yeah.
Predicted length, you know, that time.
I assume they're starting soon.
I mean, like, how long it's supposed to last?
Oh.
No, how long the work is gonna take.
Yeah.
How long you work?
They're pretty fast, because they did the other one quick.
I would, I would say three weeks.
You want me to make them, yeah, sorry, we wanted to make a motion.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to pay, um, invoice fifty for Greys up north and fifty-one due to the dock being damaged and being refurbished. So for.
That's invoice numbered.
Yes, sir.
You wanna put a dollar in all of it?
So, uh, seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So the next thing that we added is the Paskey City Recreation Participation Report. And first, longer to come the bill. And so for twenty-twenty-four, it was twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Does everybody know what that is? I never knew what it was either. So, every person kid that participates in things like softball, basketball, soccer, all that stuff outside stuff, they keep track of that and then they, the city charges. They keep track of that and then they cha, the city charges us back for a portion of that.
Do they still send you the names of every participant?
Yep.
Um, actually, they didn't.
I got it, cause I had, you know, cause I had asked Kendall if, um. If you got this, cause it wasn't on the thing and you said that he forgot to send it to you, so.
Oh, yeah.
But yes. Yeah.
So I would take a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to pay the city of Pataski twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the participation.
Well, second.
Okay. Um, there's a motion in the second, any. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Three hundred and sixty-one kids applied by streams.
Um, moving on to committee reports, Mr. White, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Wheaton. First thing I need to report on, I'm thirty-two, it's the brush that we have in the county. It's a very hot topic of conversation. We have taken care of the off-field site by tub grinding it, we've taken care of the transfer station site by tub grinding it. We're now over on Hathaway Road, which is three acres, twenty-five feet high, they have a third of it done. And they hope to have it done before the snow fly. Um. Once it's ground, it's taken to a biofuel company in Grand Rapids.
Very cool.
And part of the cost, they get to take that and cut, so we're looking to come, um, estimated right now that once all the brush has been ground up and sent away, cause. Our bill to the county will probably be close to five hundred thousand dollars. There's a bill in the state senate that Mr. Fairburn had got through the house for a hundred thousand dollars to re-invers counties, townships and cities. Costs during the storm, it's in senate committee right now, we don't know when it's going to be out. Or if Governor Whitman will sign it, we're assuming she will. Other county news, we're just doing housekeeping, carpeting, replacing some carpeting, fixing elevators, fixing air conditioners at Lakeside, replacing some windows. Uh, doing some work up to Pelston Airport, um, for runways and such as that, and unless there's any questions, that's when we report tonight.
Any updates on, cause I've had a couple of questions on the roads. As far as the brush along the roads, is the county still working through that, yeah?
Tim, believe it or not, they're working on this roads, uh, up northern part of the county was just hit. They're also trying to get some seasonal roads open, they're about a, a little over half of the seasonal roads are still closed on basketball. Uh, they only opened seventy-three at the last board commission meeting, so they are working to get to the, um. Brush on the side, yeah, there were also being people that want their bottles filled too, and.
Right.
It was only a certain size. Thank you, Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you. Uh, planning commission.
Okay, so we, uh, our last meeting, we approved case PC number four dash two zero two five. Which was a site plan review, uh, for the Village Heights project down in Bay Harbor, so that's, there's some condominiums gonna go in. Cause you go in the main entrance of the light, right on the right-hand side there. Um, they were previously approved as part of PUD two, but we just did a site plan review. And, um, that has been reduced as far as information to five buildings with twenty-five residential units. And twenty-one detached garage, which is roughly half what the original sculpt was for it, so. Um, we approved that and then, have to be careful, cause Dave's listening. But, um, no, we, we got into, we got into discussion on the master plan. And, um, I can show you for reference, but there's a section, um, basically from Camp Daggett. East, um, to be the corner of Lake Grove, right there, that is still, um, zoned far forest. And the master plan has identified as a commercial corridor. And, um, currently, we don't really have like a, uh, commercial zoning classification. And so we've asked, um, staff to gather some information. On what options we might have, uh, if the township wanted to rezone. That portion on the south side of the highway from, I guess, Camp Daggett essentially to Lake Grove. So. They're gonna bring us back some options, obviously, there'll be multiple meetings on that before we get, uh, anything in front of the board, but. Just trying to be a little bit, um, proactive. That's it. David Queller was at the meeting and, uh, did a fantastic job, very knowledgeable.
Tim?
Yes.
Is the property, the kind of property you described just adjacent to Bay Harbor, is that part of Bay Harbor?
It's part of the Bay Harbor part, yeah.
How about zoning board of appeals?
Uh, no, me neither.
Paskey Recreation.
Uh, yes. Um, we're having our, the annual picnic at Arlington Park on June twenty-sixth, it's to get everybody kinda together in the area. They, the, kinda, the city provides hot dogs and buns and then everybody brings the dish to pass. Oh, and then the bay show. Some. Um. Curtis Lockwood in the River Road Sports Complex, they're working on revamping them, so they kinda get some like preliminary. Um, drawings on that and they're hoping to have it take to the city council by July seventh. Oh, no, that's, sorry, the village update, they're taking to the city council, um, they wanna ask for a parks, um. Village to put on the. December, November ballot. To help. But, but. Lots of ideas, they're working on their master plan, so. The other parks got it last year, so these other parks are in this year.
Okay. Um, Parks and Rec. Gotta handle that, Mike?
Sure. Um, you know, working with Beckett Raider for the updated rec plan, um, and the survey that's gonna be coming out, that was the majority of our work, who's, who's been. Them to update the questionnaire and those eight, information and the, when you plan your plan of that, um. Some things were been on hold with the discussion on the sturgeon property as far as frail use in this area, just because of, uh. The damage that was done and bigger fish to fry than, than what, if what that had to deal with there. Now that we already talked about the parking lot at Pioneer, um, the closure of that and the, and the logging that was taking place. Updated two-year maintenance contract with Fred J. Wade. And a big part of it, you know, we talked about it already today, but, um, was the dedication of the, this park of mine to Bob Garland. And that was a big priority for us, so, you know, we'll get Plan B on the funding of that, or what that plan could look like and. You know, I think that will be a big discussion, cause, you know, I think we would all would love to have that dedication being with. Bob the tenants.
Yes.
So, and I think all you will like to attend that too, and part of that, and that's something that'd be promoted and folks would come out, they'll celebrate that, so. But we'll be on our agenda for next discussion.
We pay for it, do we have to give bids?
No.
Us as individuals?
No. No, I just, I had, had two from I got from, say, that they, they think that he could do, um, in town, the two, so it doesn't hurt to see if they possibly is.
But if you take care of it, we don't necessarily have to get bids.
No, but if you have an, I mean, send us a nice picture and we can put it out there on Facebook with some kind of. Verbiage, you know, if you'd like to donate something to help support it.
Well, just the. The plaque, the.
But I mean, send a nice email of that, not the copy that. I mean, you got a nice PDF of it that gets sent to you. You can forward.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, then we can put it out there, yeah, put it up. I don't think it'll take long.
There were nothing on, there's nothing scheduled as far as the dedication, that's something.
How long did they say that that would take, you know, to have it made?
Month.
Month.
Okay, um, environmental.
We already talked it to death.
Yeah. So. Is it a problem to have two board members on environmental? You knew, Eric, Eric was there before you.
No, but I think that's something we bring, do next month as we work on. There's a lot of committee meet appointments that need to be done. At least we haven't done them for this year.
Um, Ellen County Road Commission, so. I wanted to follow up with the question you had, Tim, at a good talk with the road commission engineer the other day. And on the, I said already, ever coming back to resort township, he goes, well, we're working up north, and he said. We've done the roads that we're working on this year. He didn't necessarily talk to me about the two tracks, but, um, he said that. They probably had two hundred of their nine hundred miles done. So, said we got a long ways to go.
I was kinda curious about that with that Intertown, because there's so much that's toward, on, almost on the road.
I wonder if they'll be back there.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. They'll come back and. Um, how about?
They, they were saying, do they go down Intertown?
What's that?
Do they do Intertown? Cause I'm past my house, I mean, that's right, I mean, people are still driving over if you get off.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
On the white line, it's covered, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's this way, they're gonna pay even.
No, I know that, I just wanted to, I wondered if they.
Yeah, and, and then I asked him about after room. He goes, wasn't that fixed? Nice and old, isn't that fixed? We have to go and visit that sometime soon, so that they can see. Hopefully make another attempt to, as you said, yeah. Fire department.
So we did, uh, some drafting and water shuttle out of Pine Con and found an issue with, uh, one of the dry hydrant stand pipes leaking. We, uh, went around and tested, uh, dry hydrants and tanks within, uh, Bay Township and part of Resort Township. Uh, we had thirty-six calls, we did, uh, smoke detector installs of eleven and three carbon dioxide detectors. We did our annual ladder testing, the ground ladder testing, and we had one of our ladders fail and we're working on replacing that at a cost of roughly, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. So.
Okay. Um, cemetery board.
Um, we just had a quick special meeting. Um, they wanted to move some equipment to surplus, uh, they're trading in one of their covotas for a bigger, better one. That was with.
Okay, revenue sharing board, nothing since last month. Um, fire board, nothing. Library, nothing, so. This is new on the agenda, the Walloon Lake Watershed Collaborative. Um. The Walloon Lake Association people really worked hard on putting this together. And they have a memorandum of understanding with each one of the five townships and. Along with the Walloon Lake. People. There are a couple of directors. The five township supervisors met for the first time on, on Friday. And kind of laid out some of the things that they're interested in and some of the things that we're interested in. And, uh, it'll be maybe, uh, three meeting a year type thing, it's not every month. And. It was, it was rather interesting getting together with, um. The other four supervisors. Um, member reports. Supervisor Wheaton, nothing, and assessor, nothing. Anybody have anything for me? Um, Trader.
Nothing, the new taxes will be out. In a couple of weeks, Merry Christmas. Um, I just wanna thank everybody that worked on. For the environmental committee, the cleanup day here, it was not a nice day, it was the coldest day, I think we've had, but we did a good job though, it was fun. Do make the best out of bad situations.
I was hoping that we'd have billed a date from GFL for the cleanup.
Can you also ask them to return the recycle bin that had all of our batteries in it? The green recycle bin? Please.
Oh, that's where it went to. I wondered where it was.
Um, what role, Chairman?
Uh, nothing really to report, working on a couple of FOIA requests and. Got back the last, um, Friday night from the conference last week in. Muskegon, where we had different, um, some different sessions, one was on. It pretty much took all afternoon for the Open Meeting Act in minutes. It's one of the sessions, another session was on, um, how to find the law in MCL review, and that was really informative, how to. Go onto the state website and start looking up the, all the MCL laws and the shortcuts that he used and. Um, and these are different clerks that are bringing these classes on, that's been in the business for a while. Um, election FOIs. And then we had, um, how to budget for elections. And then on Friday morning was pretty much. The Bureau of Elections was there to let you know, to tell us what the, some of the stuff that's going through the legislation. Um, in a couple of years, we'll, our contracts are all up with all of our voting equipments, we'll have to renew statewide contracts for that, so we'll be getting new voting equipment. So I have to look at that into the budget. And actually, our vendor, E S and S, had the new machines down there. And. Like the voter assist terminal that we have, you just put the blank ballot in and you go through a little touchscreen. And you go to hit print, it just fits it out just like that, like you're at the My Yourself checkout there, there, scan and go, the receipts fit out that facets. And even the, she said that when they open it up, you usually were waiting for it to open up and load up and all that, she goes, it's like instantly. So it's like much faster and even the, the tabulator, she says, when they, I didn't get to see the results get printed out, but she says, when that happens. It's much faster getting the results. As opposed to waiting for, waiting. Pam knows it. Uh, but that's pretty much all I got, definitely worth it. And they were celebrating their twenty-five years as an association, for the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks.
Something for me, but. Trust me, cleanable.
So I don't have anything to report on, but as I'm thinking about some of these contracts with people. You know, it, I wouldn't be opposed to going multi-year contracts, so we don't have to do this every year, so I think that would be a fair. Thing to do, um, maybe a two or three-year contract for landscaping, obviously, landscapers are very busy, this is the worst time of year to get quotes for them, so. If we had a schedule, you know, for anything that we need to bid out, that we know yearly, annually. We need to have a schedule, we need to have, do it in a timely manner. Um, and multi-year contracts, I think, would be beneficial for us and them, so something.
Yeah, he probably realizes cost things.
Right.
In the long run, right?
Right, right.
They're gonna bid.
Yeah.
We, we did that with Jake Wade and, um.
Right.
Did it, like, two year with him.
Yeah. Can I make one comment, though? Um, I would like, anything that has to do with the environmental committee, please give to me and I will see that it gets on the website, because there, in the last two weeks, there's been in. Wrong information put out there. So. Let the environmental committee take care of that, and not cause conflict or uproar with the people. Maybe.
Um, we got bills to pay.
May I ask about this bill, this FED one? Cause you put it in our box, but it, it expired in October, expired in December.
We never, never acted on that.
That was a, so that was his bid, but we approved it last.
Rufus said we approved it, I just wanted it to be out here so that you guys could see it.
Okay.
And it, I guess it got lost in my stuff.
We moved it on Tuesday, October fourth.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so he's still good with that price.
I called him and asked him to send me a new one, and that's what they sent, so apparently they are. I called him and asked him to send me a new one and that's what they sent. So apparently they are.
There you go.
Because Angel, Angelary moved and Welshheimer Al seconded.
Okay. Okay, so. So you haven't got a bill for the boozes, mission there? Must be in the mail. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I have some questions.
Or you make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um. Pay the per diem general bills of the fire department.
I support.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're none? Motion passed.
Just to let you know that positive pay is awesome. I mean, it really, it catches everything, but I mean, I have to be on the computer every day. You have to look, but it's. It's amazing how they catch everything.
We're back to open to the public.
You gonna do, uh, number three? Under unfinished business? What did I note? For free.
Did that?
Were you sleeping?
You might have stepped out.
There was a motion made, yeah, and supported and approved.
What, that was the one we forgot to, it said, right, man.
Anybody else? Anybody else there? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Last call for public comment. Okay. At eight oh two, I'll adjourn the meeting. And thank you all for coming.